Commissioners, the next item is item number nine. It's an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan's 39 East Seventy-Second Street, AKA 39A East Seventy-Second Street located within the Upper East Side Historic District. It's docket number 162658, block 1387, lot 25. It's a row house with Neogrec-style elements designed by Robert B. Lind and built in 1881 to 82, and subsequently altered in 1905 by William Strom. An application is to alter the facade and areaway and to construct a rooftop addition. This was read into the record on November 18th, 2014, and presented for the first time November 25th, 2014.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Olivia Brazia, Preservation Staff. I'll just quickly review the major aspects of the proposal as it was shown on November 25th, which were to re-clad the building in a light-colored sandstone, introduce a classically-inspired entrance and entrance surround at grade here, restore the decorative window surrounds at the upper floors, and construct a two-story rooftop addition with the first story of it expressed as a visible mansard roof. Your comments about this proposal, I'll just summarize them briefly. There were a number of questions about relocating, or sorry, the proposed changes in floor heights at the building, also the accessibility requirements of the project. There was some concern about the proposed sandstone cladding material and how it related to the neighbor at 41. There was also a desire to see a stronger restorative approach at the upper floors to strengthen the relationship with the neighbor. Finally, there were some objections to the visibility of a second floor of the rooftop addition. So I'll hand it over to you, Cass, who can give you another objection.
Thank you, Olivia. Good afternoon, Cass Stackler, Kingdoms, Quaysport, and Partners. As Olivia said, there were concerns when we presented this back in November, two sort of primary features. One was the articulation of the facade, which this is the existing condition. All the historic material, other than the original cornice, had been stripped off sometime between 1940 and 1980. The proposal is to recreate in sandstone window inframings and other architectural features. While you don't see it in this rendering, this is the...
Okay. I'm sorry, Cass, I just have to interrupt for one moment. We're just going to reopen the hearing.
Okay.
Because we closed it last time.
Yes.
Let's go ahead.
Well, there doesn't appear to be a large change. John will take you through the design presentation, but I wanted to sort of summarize how we addressed your comments and what those changes are. At the top three floors, as you'll see, there's now a direct connection between the two buildings at 39 East Seventy-Second Street and its neighbor, 41. These were two of a historic Row of Nine row houses. You were concerned about different window opening heights, which did not align. And by changing some of the floor heights in the lower portion of the building, now the top three floors actually read continuously across. And as well, we've integrated some of the detailing, these pedimented lintels that match those details at 41. So that, this is the second sheet in your handout indicated the current rendering. So there's been an effort to integrate the two buildings more closely together, their detailing and the alignment of the windows. That's resulted in a sort of a simplification of some of the detailing at the base of the building, which I think will address some of your comments. And then up at the roof, in regard to that top floor, we pushed that back another eight feet. It's now set 40 feet back from the front facade of the building. And you'll see what the visibility is. It's quite limited. It hasn't gone away, but it's quite limited, and you see it in the context of the back of much larger buildings on Park Avenue. Some existing photographs, as you may recall, a building that without the cornice probably would be a no-style building, but it is, given a style designation, has some Neogrec details that maintains its original cornice. The railing around the areaway dates to 1905, when the stoop was removed and an extension was built off the back. The facade has been painted and coated with some kind of semantitious coating, which really precludes us from actually restoring that historic material. So instead, we're re-cladding in sandstone. An existing photograph of the building and its neighbor at 41, and then this different scale that exists on either side of these much larger buildings. Historic photographs that you saw, again, here we are. This is from about 1950, after the building had been refaced and stripped. And you can see the variation among the remaining buildings in the row. Sorry. 1940 tax photo, time of designation photograph, and 1980 tax photo, just showing that sort of degradation and evolution of the facade. And then I just wanted to sort of reiterate the point that we had made last time in November. Thinking about other buildings in the district, the designation report speaks extensively about the sort of speculative row houses that were built in the 70s, 1870s, 80s, and 90s, but it also speaks to the changes that occurred, particularly in the first quarter of the 20th century, as a sort of phenomenon that occurred when buildings changed hands and they were enlarged, particularly with mansard additions. This row on 62nd Street, I think summarizes sort of how these rows changed over time, but still very much read as a row. And I think our changes on 72nd Street are very similar. This building in particular was re-clad in 1917 from its original 1870s brownstone, but it still very much reads as part of this row. And I think that's something that we're looking to in our proposal. And I'll hand it off to John with this existing elevation, just spreading from Fifth Avenue to Park Avenue to sort of show the context. This is not a side-street row house context, this is a cross-town street. And I think the scale of this streetscape allows perhaps for sure, perhaps more height and more visibility than some of the other sort of more delicate conditions that exist elsewhere in the district.
Thank you. I'm John Setra, Setra Radio Architects. I think Cass, it's been sort of summarized what the main elements of change were. And I think this slide kind of shows the amount of change that has actually occurred along 72nd Street and the additions that were, that had been put on, even some of the smaller buildings that surround us here. You can see that this is our proposal, which shows the two floors, the two-story addition on top of the existing building, and also the changes that we're proposing for the facade. And this, the prior, we have slides that are from November, and then we have the current slides, which show the changes that we actually made based upon some of the comments that have been made at that November hearing. So the existing elevation that you can see here, this is our building, existing window openings, totally devoid of any detail here, and just the cornice really is the only element that remains. This is what we had proposed in November. And based upon the comments at that time, I think we did some things that I think have improved the overall appearance of the facade. We were able to, we restudied the floor elevations and the openings of our neighbor to the east, and we were able to go back to an alignment of all of the windows here from the third floor up. We also took another look at some of the kind of subtle detailing in the adjacent building with the pedimented central window frame, and frame it. And we decided to also to include that. So there's a continuation of the fabric between the two buildings here. As we had spoken about before, we are raising the basement level basically to a ground floor level, so to facilitate accessibility. And in doing so, needed to raise the parlor floor. So the parlor floor is not the 14-foot that it was originally, it's more like 11 feet now. But one of the things that we did, how the exterior kind of relates to the interior, was that there is a strong line on the block of buildings, even this modern apartment building from the 60s, had a sort of created a line of two-story detail that kind of ran through. The brownstone to the east, of course, had the stair. The stair had been preserved, it had the larger windows here, but it had a way of integrating the sill into some of the detail. So what we have done is to incorporate some of those lines, to create a sill that runs all the way through here on the second floor, and incorporate some similar details that you find on the adjacent building. And also to slightly project an opening, albeit not in the location that it had been here, but in the center, so that there is still a rhythm of projection on that, within that two-story, within that two-story section that kind of composes the entire block. So here's the existing section of the building and our proposed section. So all of the, as I said, all of the windows from the third floor up aligned with our neighbor. And you can see that, you know, we've gone to the effort of working out the details, so we will work both for the interior, the interior relationship to the window, as well as to the exterior. We are preserving the wrought iron gate and repositioning the elements that could be taken apart and repositioned to create the central entrance. And I'll go into it in more detail later. This was showing what we originally proposed at the 37-foot dimension here. Now, this is, what we've done is we've re-analyzed the elevator and found a smaller elevator and also redesigned the fire stair in the building, so we were able to push this back so that it's 40 feet from the lot line, from the facade of the building. And also, we've reduced the square footage of that space as well.
Okay. Diana, you have a question?
Yeah. On the previous slide, what I, I just wanted you to point out, what is actually visible from the street, what portion of the construction is now in the new plan?
Okay. Do you want me to jump to that? This is...
Oh, it's okay. No, just keep...
I can go through.
No, no, just go ahead. That's fine.
Actually, what I can do is tell you that the mansard was, part of our argument was that it was an allowable visual element because it's the way that other buildings have been enlarged in the district. There is a small portion of this area in a certain specific location on the west side of Madison Avenue where you can see this corner.
Do you have the...
We have that, yes, we do.
Yeah, when we get there, that's fine.
Okay.
So...
I just wanted to see it in the elevation, that's fine.
Okay.
But can we just go back to some of the changes that you made? Because at the last hearing, I think the Commissioners were concerned about the visibility of the penthouse and just the additions to the existing building. And we asked you to sort of reconsider that. You've done some of that, which is to push it further back. I think that we recognize that the adjacent building already has a bulkhead or some kind of penthouse, which is set back significantly...
Yes.
...and is taller. And I'm just wondering whether there was any approach on your part to try and maybe align the penthouses and try and get them to the same height, so this doesn't become even taller, since you haven't really given up on the idea of having a penthouse. And I'm just looking at the floor-to-ceiling heights, which I think could easily be reduced, both for the mansard piece as well as the piece above, which may be able to make you at the same level as the existing.
Can you just, can you let us get to the...
Okay.
Because I think it's important to see what it actually looks like.
Okay.
Right, right.
That's fine, okay.
I agree.
Yeah. And so these are just showing, you have these drawings in the package showing the work on the other, the rear facade, the projection that was built in 1910, we're changing the window patterns there, and basically building, rebuilding the parapet that is up at the top. So here, this is the, this is what we had originally proposed in November of 2014. And at the time, we also discussed the heights. And I think that the issue of the heights, my concern about lowering this any further was that because of the height of the cornice here, that we didn't want to create a feeling that this penthouse or this mansard, the space within this area would actually feel like a basement, where the window, the window sill would come up too high within the room. As a matter of fact, that was one of the reasons why we set this back off of the, off of the top of the cornice, so we could put a larger, more typical window in there. So, and...
But couldn't you reduce, I mean, I don't know how many inches, couldn't you shift that whole floor down so it's flush with what's happening over there? No, just go back to that.
Well, yeah. I, you mean, slide this...
Yeah.
Lower the roof?
Yeah.
Lower this level down?
Mm-hmm. And then...
Well, that's my, my argument for that was simply that I think this window becomes so small that in order to do that, actually...
The window doesn't change in its size.
Well, I think if you lower this, if you lower this level...
You'd have to do...
You have to lower that as well. That becomes diminished by lowering, lowering this roof.
I'm not sure why, but okay.
Well, I think the, I think we have 11, nine feet here, so that if we, if we, and then we have about a foot and a half for structure and roof drainage, and so on and so forth. So I think if lowering this, I think clearly would require a change in the window, and I think might be a problem in terms of...
Just a few inches.
Would you mean lowering this a few inches?
Yeah.
Like this?
Yeah, just cutting across there, because then this whole thing gets lowered.
Yeah. But let me show you how it relates to the facade, because I don't know if it would make that much of a difference.
Okay.
You know, you can't really see very much from the street. When you're on 72nd Street, you're not seeing very much of the mansard. And you'll see that in some of the other images. You really can't see much of what we're doing except from the side. But these are window details. So let me go to, let me go to these views here. So this is what is currently proposed. And so from across the street, closer to the Park Avenue, or sort of going near Park Avenue, all you see is a little, you know, strip of the mansard here. So, because what we did was, if you recall, we did add, we lowered the parapet, we put a glass railing there. So that helped to minimize and diminish that as well.
Where's the glass railing?
It's set back...
It's on the top of the...
No, you don't see it.
It's on the top of the second?
Yeah. Here, you see it here. It's set back 30 inches from the back edge of the parapet. So you're not really, you're not really seeing it.
Okay.
So as I said, this is from across the street, and this shows the alignments here of the upper three stories with our neighbor. As you come around to the west, you see a line here. This white, whitish-colored wall here is actually a part of the, a part of the bank. When that building was built, this was the party wall, and they resurfaced their, their half of it, essentially. So that's what you're seeing there. So this is the, this is the new addition, what you're seeing, what you're seeing here. Let me go to the latest one. You see the windows, again, are a little bit bigger here and they align. But it really didn't change anything up here. You know, you're seeing some new masonry wall on the side. Now, when you go to, when you go to Madison Avenue, and you can see it in this little area map here, there's a little bit of a corner here from 72nd Street and Madison Avenue where you, where you get the full effect of the two stories. Now, this was the earlier scheme from November. And after we pushed that back more, you can see the, you can sort of see the difference in terms of, and what's visible. Now, as far as the alignment, there is a bulkhead on the bank building. And so what we've now done is pushed this back so it does align with the bank building. It's not, that portion is not coming out anymore. There's a slight break in the wall here just because of the elevator shaft. And so here, actually, this is showing what, where it's visible, where that second story is visible on 72nd Street and Madison Avenue. As a matter of fact, by the changes that we've made, the 61 feet that is visible on 72nd Street is actually 31 feet now. So that additional setback, I think, has helped, you know, quite a bit. So as I said, we had, we've studied the elevator. We found that we could incorporate a smaller elevator into the plan, so that's what we've done. We redesigned the stair. There's a fire stair, and then each apartment has its own internal stair, so the fire stair is the one that creates, becomes part of the bulkhead, so that has been tightened up. And I'll take you up to the, to the top of the building here. You can see what that is. So this is the previous layout of the, of this mezzanine level. You see that there's not very much space up here. This is connected to the apartment below by this stair. Coming up here in this apartment would then have two terraces, north and south, and the stair was here. So what we've done now is pushed that back so that there is an alignment with the adjacent structure. There's a chimney that sticks out of it, but it's aligned with the main massing of it. And then there's a slight three-foot-six dimension here, projection for the elevator, for that elevator shaft. So it's gotten much, much, you know, smaller and much more...
Before you, before you move on, Mr. Chavon, just to address your comment, what you're seeing in that rendering really is sort of this section. So you're mostly seeing an elevator bulkhead. And that elevator doesn't actually go to the top floor, it stops at the floor where the mansard is, but the overrun is basically enclosed in that top floor volume. So what you're seeing is the enclosure for the elevator and the stair, and then you see, you see this door, which is really sort of around that stair. So this is a, we've reduced by a few hundred square feet that, that top area, but it does provide an important piece of the program for the building, but we have pushed it back. But it's really sort of wrapping a stair and elevator primarily. The main volume of the habitable space is behind the bulkhead, which you don't see.
And so above this, there's nothing else, is that correct?
Right. So what was there before, actually, we had a stair bulkhead up to the upper roof, which we've been able to eliminate.
Okay.
So there's just some incidental mechanical equipment.
Okay. All right, so...
Mechanical equipment.
Okay.
But there is now no additional stair bulkhead. And this red line shows the previous configuration versus now what is here. So it came back six feet in this portion, which was the most visible. I think that had the most impact on the change that you raised.
And that stair bulkhead was, now there's a roof hatch, basically. That bulkhead came up here, so you saw that as well. That's been eliminated.
Okay. Questions? Are there any questions for, any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Yvette, you have a question?
So that drawing that you saw, where you see, you had the outline in red, of the...
Nope. This one.
First perspective, totally different, just where you see both. You see the line for the, I guess it's the penthouse, this second bulkhead.
You're talking about the visibility?
Or that, that. All right, yeah. So where's the part that came up? So something came off of it.
Yeah, actually, you see, this was what we had, if you look at, if you look at this area here, you'll see, you'll see how it changes. That's what we're proposing now. So we had that, and now we've pushed that back so that this, you can hardly see here because of the shade where that the bulkhead, mechanical bulkhead is for the bank building, but it aligns now with that. It is, the reason I was, you know, I wanted to show you this is because in order for the top of this to align with the top of the bank, because you were, I think you were...
Yeah, I was asking that.
That was, that's about four feet, and then that would, that wouldn't be possible. It's just too much of a, too much of a change.
Well, I can understand if you tried to take all the four feet off the top floor, but that's why I was wondering whether it's, we're trying to see if you could reduce the height between the two floors.
Right.
So...
I think one of the questions is, if there is no second floor, what's visible? And you were just saying that the overrun of the elevator is...
It's still pop up.
This part here would be visible.
And that whole thing is the overrun?
That's the overrun.
This corner is the elevator overrun, and the stair is behind, is behind it. So if this went away, this line would continue back, you know, that little bit of a, you see the break there, that line would continue back, and this...
That's the element that would be reduced.
And the stair is going to the mansard, is going to the second floor?
Yeah, it's going to the, yeah, the second floor. Stops there.
I think it's also worth, just in terms of sort of appropriateness, sort of thinking about the position of that element relative to the front facade, too. And sort of, this is a slightly zoomed view, you know, as John said, it's not exactly a moment, but it's a small area on this sort of corner of Madison and 72nd Street. But I think it is, you know, it's very much sort of divorced from the front facade and the building's relationship to the ones in the east at 41. And it's also something you're not seeing, silhouetted against the sky. You're seeing it, it's a clad like a bulkhead, and you're seeing it in the context of the back of those buildings, that front, those very tall parts of the buildings that front onto Park Avenue, so.
The fact that the colors darker made the building, they make it more...
We'd be happy to change the color of that.
But then it would be copper clad, so it is looking, you know, dark as...
I was saying, maybe the coloring is maybe a little more...
Yeah. Makes it look darker.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks. All right, comments? Okay. So I think there were sort of two broad areas. One was the treatment of the facade itself, because it was, had been stripped, and their proposal wasn't really bringing it back to what it was originally, but it was about recognizing that there have been layers of different styles that have accompanied buildings of this typology in this district, so they've kind of used that philosophy. The change from the first hearing to the second hearing was really about ensuring that the windows, which were previously changed in its shape and form and not relating to anything, has now been regularized, at least in the top three floors. And I think that's a big improvement. It really helps you to sort of see some continuity. The first two floors, they are changing because they're trying to essentially address issues of ADA compliance and trying to make that upgrade. I think the second part of this proposal is the rooftop addition, and we had some concerns about its visibility, and they've come back with an approach, I think primarily what they've done is they shifted it back as far as possible, but they noted that the bulkhead would still be apparent. Comments? Are we okay with this, or...
The facade improvement is fantastic.
Yeah, the facade is good. So I think the question on just the bulkhead is really if, recognizing that the overrun, will anybody be seen? It seems that the penthouse itself is really just a sort of sliver that is going to be seen, and as whether we think that's appropriate. Okay. Does anybody have concerns then?
I still don't think there's too much, but... But it doesn't help to just, originally I thought that it could be improved if you got rid of the second floor, if you had the second floor. But in this scheme, even if we had no second floor, we still have visibility of the elevator and the stair, and without knowing that it'd be somewhere else, suppose we can't...
The only thing I would suggest is that I think they should work with stuff to just make the height as low as possible. And I think it would actually work, because I'm looking at these exonometrics, they've aligned it with the bulk, the penthouse on the adjacent building. It would be much better if it's almost as, to the same height, because I don't think you see so many of these popping up. And so just in terms of, what we'd like to see is at least it replicates the height that's adjacent to the building. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's visible always for a brief moment in time when you're walking down to Madison Avenue in one place, and you're seeing it all behind a much higher building.
Right. So even if they can't bring it down by four feet, it seems they could bring it down by two feet, and it just...
The second, right?
It's...
The mansard is visible.
The mansard is visible, yeah, the top is visible really from Madison Avenue and the intersection.
Two.
So if it starts matching up, I think it just would relate better to the adjacent building. Okay. So in that case, we can close the hearing and, yeah, work with stuff. Diana, do you want to read that?
In the matter of a certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Manhattan, 162658, 39 East 72nd Street, AKA 39A East 72nd...
East 72nd Street, Upper East Side Historic District, Block 1387, Lot 25. Application is to alter the facade and areaway and to construct a rooftop addition. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the circa 1905 alterations to this building, including the decorative door and window surrounds and classical door lintel at the ground floor, are not part of a cohesive design, and therefore, the removal of these features will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or district. That early 20th century facade alterations found on buildings throughout this historic district represent an important phase in the development of the district, and the proposed approach to this facade will be an interpretation of the building's original appearance, as well as its significant later alteration, and is consistent with a layering of styles typically seen in the historic district. That the brownstone primary facade has been stripped of ornament and heavily coated and is exfoliating, damaged or otherwise unsound. That the use of a light-colored sandstone as a facade cladding material will allow for a substantial restoration of the details of the facade, including the profiled window surrounds with bracketed sills and lintels and the original ashlar jointing. That sandstone is a traditional building material used contemporaneously during the construction date of this row and is found in row house construction in the city. That the details of the upper facade will closely match the neighboring building, which is part of the original row of nine houses and is highly intact. That the window openings and sill heights at the third through fifth floors will be maintained, therefore preserving the visual relationship with the neighboring building. That the light-colored sandstone will have a finish color and aggregate similar to brownstone and is in keeping with the traditional color and material palette of late 19th century neo-grec style buildings. That the classical style of the proposed at-grade entrance portico, the center window surrounded the parlor floor, and the parlor floor corners are all harmonious with the facade and reference the 1905 alteration. That the proposed at-grade entrance centered on the facade is in keeping with the configuration of entrances found on buildings within this district that were altered in the early 20th century. That the proposed reconfiguration of the areaway will return it to grade level, and that the proposed bluestone paving will recall the historic areaway paving material and is in keeping with historic paving materials for row houses within the district. That the proposed planters will align with stoops and areaway walls remaining throughout the streetscape along the lot line. That there is a precedent for mansard roof additions on similar buildings within this historic district. That the proposed massing and copper cladding of the mansard roof and dormers will harmonize with the facade composition and materials palette of this building. And that the combination of an altered classical-style ground floor with neo-grec style upper floors and mansard roof addition is found on other buildings in the district and reflects the type of alterations which historically occurred in the development of the Upper East Side Historic District. And that the applicant will work with the staff to minimize the visibility to the extent
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, this application has been approved.